You are me.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to our special council meeting. Later on this evening, 7:30, we'll have our special budget meeting, but right now we're doing a special council meeting. And we'll start with some questions. There were a couple of questions submitted earlier today, and I've gotten our experts to answer the questions. So these two questions were submitted, two similar questions. I believe it was Vanessa Blanchford and Joanne Eddy sent in their questions. And since they both are very similar and deal with the same general topic, which is flooding on Dufferin, in particular, the block between Queen Mary and Ellerdale, and also along Ellerdale between McDonald and Dufferin, that rough area. So I'm going to address those questions. There are two basic questions here. One of them is, why do we have this flooding at the corner of Ellerdale and Dufferin? What's the cause of that? Same as the flooding that people are getting along Dufferin into their basements, their garages, and so on. They're two different issues, so two different answers. But we'll start with the one related to the flooding on Ellerdale between the corner of Dufferin, stretching all the way to McDonald. The residents in the area were kind enough to send in pictures, and I know I drove over to see for myself. And there's no question, there was a lot of water on the ground over there. So what's that caused by? It's caused by leaves blocking the sewer grates. Now, what are we going to do about it? Well, it's what we are doing about it, and that is Public Works knows about the problem. They clean out the leaves frequently, especially when they know rain is coming, especially when they know there's a flood over there. And they're on top of it. They know, they clean it out. But it's impossible to have it totally clean all the time. And the reason is, when we have heavy rain, Dufferin has a fairly sizable slope, and the water runs down the street. And with it come the leaves. So at the time of the year, when we had the flooding with those pictures, there were lots of leaves. They had been cleaned, but again, more leaves came with the rain. You can't have someone standing there and constantly cleaning the leaves as the rain falls. It's just not something that one can do. So they do the next best thing. They clean it, they clear it as often as they possibly can. They know about the problem. They try to have the grates cleaned in advance when they know that the rains are coming, heavy rains are coming. So that's the answer to why we have the flooding there. Some of the residents were thinking there must be something wrong with the sewers, that there's dirt in them, there's... I know, they're blocked somehow, but they're not. We've had cameras down there, we've checked them all out, and the sewers are perfectly clean. There's absolutely no problem. The problem is the leaves on top of the sewer grates. So that's part of the answer. The other question had to do with, well, we said we were going to have consultants, engineer consultants, take a good look at this whole situation and answer the question, why are we getting basements and garages flooded? Well, the engineers did exactly that, and we recently got the report. And I'm going to read to you part of the report, the key items, as reported to me earlier today. And they said firstly, the report concludes that the town sewer system is capable of handling the water volume, including the heavy rains that have occurred on this section of pipe. So it's not that the sewer can't handle this volume, it can. Secondly, they concluded that the majority of flooding occurring on Dufferin does not relate to our sewer system, but that the sloping driveways with their small catch basins are the culprit. And it goes on to say that what residents need to do is they need to expand the size of their catch basins. These are mostly old houses. They have small catch basins. They're not wide enough, they're not deep enough. And as a result, they cannot handle heavy rains. It comes racing down their driveways, and it cannot handle the volume of water when we have heavy rains. This applies to most of the homes. It may not apply to all, but it applies to most. They found a second problem, and that is that the gutters around the roofs, in many cases, those gutters empty out onto the driveways. And sometimes you have gutters collecting rain from four different houses. They're quadruplexes, if that's the right word, two duplexes. And all the water, in some cases, comes pouring right down into the driveway, which is the worst possible place for it. So if residents who own these buildings put the gutters so that it brings the water down into the grass, onto the ground, away from the driveway, it will help tremendously. Because according to the consultants, an awful lot of water is coming onto the driveways from those gutters. So there are those two basic things, larger, deeper catch basins, and if it applies, gutters that drain onto the ground and not onto driveways. And the final thing that has to be mentioned, what I've been talking about up until now, is rainwater. But at the same time, when all this water comes down and goes into the sewers, if you don't have a sewer backup valve, a clean and functioning sewer backup valve as required by our bylaws, it's been required for a number of years now, if you don't have that, if it doesn't exist, or if it's not clean and thus blocked in the open position, you will get sewer backup, which is even worse than plain rainwater, because it's dirty, it's filthy. And having had that in 1987 in my own house, I know you don't want it. And we now manually clean our sewer backup valve. We don't want this problem again. So if you don't have a sewer backup valve, please put one in. If you don't check it every year and make sure it's clean and functioning, please do that. So that's what we, that's what the engineer consultants concluded, and that's basically the answer. The question was, what happened to that report and what did it show? So now, everybody knows exactly what it shows. Okay, at this point, I will check and see if we have questions. Okay, questions. It appears that there are no questions this evening. So that being the case, we will move on to the meeting.
If we're going to the adoption of the agenda, I propose that we defer item four, adoption of bylaw concerning the tax rates.
Mr. Edrich will be deferred. The moment will be at this item. It's the better, the best way to do it.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
And do we have someone seconding that?
Well, we have to adopt the agenda first. That's what Mr. Pirtap said. We go to that item.
Yeah, we have to adopt the agenda, and one will be at the item about the thing to be deferred. It will be deferred at that moment, not right now.
Okay, fine. So, adoption of the agenda. Would someone like to move adoption of the agenda?
Shaffer.
Councilor Goldwax, seconded by Councilor Shaffer. Anyone opposed? Very well, the agenda is adopted now.
Now, I propose that we defer item four, adoption of bylaw number 1026 concerning tax rates.
And would someone like to second that?
Goldwax.
Councilor Goldwax. That was Councilor Eddy who proposed it, Councilor Goldwax who seconded it. Is everybody okay with that? Any opposed? No, so nobody's opposed. It's unanimous. It has to be unanimous, and I'm glad it is unanimous. Okay, that brings us to item... Well, we've adopted the agenda. We've deferred 4.0. So we will move to item 5.0. And for those who are listening, 4.0 will come back. We're putting it into the special budget meeting. We're just moving it. So it will be dealt with later this evening. Okay, that brings us to 5.0. Adoption of bylaw 1001-6 entitled Bylaw Modifying the Zoning Bylaw Number 1001-2. On motion of councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor?
Shaffer.
Shaffer. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1001-6 entitled Bylaw Modifying Zoning Bylaw Number 1001-2. Anyone opposed? That's adopted, and that brings... And for the benefit of people listening, basically, all this does is we're allowing circular driveways on Coats St. Luke Road, where we have our apartment buildings. That's all this is doing. And it was simply a mistake that crept into our bylaws. We didn't realize it until recently, but we now realize it. So we do indeed want circular driveways, and we have many, many of them on Coats St. Luke Road. So now they're legal again. Okay, that brings us to 6.0. Adoption of bylaw, adoption of bylaw 1010-12, having to do with tariffs for the urban planning department. On motion of councillor?
Okay, Goldwax.
Shaffer.
Okay, that was proposed by councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor Shaffer, if I heard correctly. So it's resolved to approve bylaw number 1010-12 entitled Bylaw Modifying the Tariffs, bylaw number 1010 regarding the urban planning department. Anyone opposed? No, nobody's opposed. And what that's about, that's, that is important. We realized that some, we have a lot of major renovations going on in the town. And we realized that people were giving us estimates of the price for these major renovations, which were too low, so that they would pay less in the way of permit fees. So as of now, that's not possible anymore. We will look at the estimates. We're giving ourselves the right to have an independent consultant check the estimates. And if it should be higher, it will be higher. And we also are looking at the square footage of the area of the modification. And we will be charging based on the square footage or the estimate, whichever is higher. We have something similar to that for new construction. Now, we are doing it for major enhancements, renovations, additions, that sort of thing as well, just to be consistent and for the same reason, so that we're not losing any revenue. Okay, 7.0, adoption of bylaw number 89.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's councillor Fassi here. I have a question.
Sure.
I remember we had the short discussion on this bylaw, and actually, I didn't oppose, because I just tried to remember. I was about to raise my hand and oppose, because I think there is some problems with this bylaw, and I'll explain. Because here you have, you on the police, every resident who comes and wants to build an extension or renovation, and as if we don't trust. And there is a reason, because I've been around, we've all been around, and we've seen people coming with ridiculous estimates of work, cost of work. That said, I think this bylaw that we're proposing and passing tonight has a little bit of too much of policing our residents, and I would like to respectfully ask for a discussion on this, because when that was discussed in caucus, we didn't really allocate enough time to bring arguments for and against. And I would like to bring that back on, unless, if somebody wants to second that move, I'd be glad. Otherwise, I oppose.
Well, let me read, let me read the key part of the bylaw. If you want to object, that's fine. We'll put you down as objecting. But what it says is, new construction, this was already in our bylaw. The new part is, we added major renovation, transformation or expansion of an existing building for the construction of, for the issuing of a construction permit for the construction of a building, this renovation or major transformation of an existing building, or for an addition to a building of an area equal to or greater than 40 square meters, the amount calculated will be based on basically the estimated value, or at a rate of 750 per 1,000 of the value of the work. Or notwithstanding that, the cost shall not be less than $15 per square meter, which was exactly the same as for new construction. So don't forget, this is only for major expansions. It's not for minor work. Minor work remains based on the estimates. It's for major work, 40 square meters or greater. So that's the first thing to point out. The second, then, as I mentioned before, if we also reserve the right, the town, when it considers that the estimated value of work was as submitted, does not represent the actual construction cost, reserves the right to carry out a counter verification of the cost submitted by an independent evaluator at the expense of the applicant. As soon as this verification is completed, the town will bill the applicant again, if the amounts are different, for all the additional costs generated by this verification. In the event, and after a period of seven working days, the invoice is not paid by the applicant, the town reserves the right to revoke the permit issued and order the site to be stopped until payment of this invoice. Basically, if somebody cheats the town, they are cheating the taxpayers of the town. You should be...
Bill, I actually, after having read it, I see that there's an issue with it. If the person makes a statement and the town doesn't believe him, then the town goes and hires somebody to investigate it, or to give an estimate, at the cost of the applicant. But it doesn't say anything about if it turns out that the applicant was right, that that, the town should reimburse that person or not charge that person.
Actually...
Unless it says it somewhere else.
It does say it. It says, the town, when it considers that the estimated value of the work is submitted, does not represent the actual, reserves the right to carry out... Okay. Okay, it says, as soon as the verification is completed, the town will bill the applicant again, if the amounts are different, for all the additional costs generated by this verification. In other words, if the estimate comes in the same or lower than what the person said, no, they are not billed for the cost of doing this.
If it's greater, if it's greater, it gets billed.
Why, say again?
It says, this is a...
Why, say, bill the applicants again?
Okay, yes, you're right. It probably should say, if the amounts are greater rather than different. That's the part which I think councillor Shaffer has just pointed out. The line should say, if the, if the amounts are greater, okay? That means changing one word, different to greater. So how about if we go back and do this again?
But one second, Bill, before you do that again, please, one second. There is another issue. Without going into too much details, and the issue is, somebody is doing a major, as you described before, a major renovation, and came with an estimate that was disputed. And the town came back with more than double. This is major renovation. I don't want to give too much details nor address or any of that. And the town came back with more than double. And that is, it was disputed, and it's still in dispute. And I don't know what the mechanism here, because a resident can't fight the town, okay? I mean, to the way that the town can fight the resident. Bottom line is, I think this bylaw has to really consider every situation possible, both in a single family dwelling, duplexes, or multi-residential buildings, such as in Coats St. Luke Road. So without going to details, I know that the town came with more than double of an estimate of major work that will bring to the town a lot of money in the future. However, that isn't a dispute. I think we have a problem with this. If we're passing it tonight again, I can tell you, I will not vote for this. But I think I would love to see a discussion on this bylaw, and there is no rush. We can pass it next month. Nothing will happen between now and then.
Okay, so, as I said, you can vote against it, but I think what I've heard, first of all, the issue that you're talking about, whatever issue it is, I don't necessarily know, and it doesn't really matter, is prior to this bylaw. So whatever questioning is being done, it was questioning without this bylaw in place. So that will be settled eventually. If it's a lot of money, I imagine it'll be settled, small claims court or regular court, depending on the amount of money. The town isn't, can't absolutely do anything they want. We are subject to laws. So I'm not overly concerned about that. Now, with respect to this bylaw, though, I am concerned. We deliberately put in a mechanism for new construction, though, just like Montreal has, by the way, just like Westmount, we put in a, two measures, either the estimate or the square footage. And that's what it's based on. This is that very same bylaw. The only thing that we're doing is we're now saying it also should apply to major renovations over 40 square meters. So that's all we're doing. We're saying for major renovations over 40 square meters, we're protecting ourselves. And when I say ourselves, I mean the taxpayers of this town. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. However, it has been pointed out...
One last point, Bill, one last point.
Yeah, one second, one second. The, it has been pointed out that the word different should be greater. And I think we should amend, we should do this over, amend it, and then pass it. And you can vote against it if you want. Okay, last point.
One more point. 40 square meters, it's 400 square feet approximately. Many single-family dwelling owners, residents, they are, and I know for many who do their own renovation themselves, okay? And if they fall within that category of major, because they're doing 500 square feet work on their home by themselves, and so now you're fighting a small little man who's trying to save money by doing work himself, and you want to take him to come with an estimate that will be much greater than whatever he's going to come up with, because he's going to do the work mostly the resident himself, if you understand what I'm saying.
If I can intervene on that, the issue is that if we have a consultant who verifies it, obviously, our consultant has to take into account your example, where the resident is doing the work himself. The consultant is not going to take into account a professional doing the renovation if he knows that the individual resident is doing the renovation.
It doesn't say that in your...
It doesn't matter. The consultant, it doesn't have to say that, because the consultant...
It matters, Harvey, because it's not written there. You can tell me whatever you want.
The consultant, if a consultant bases himself on a professional renovation when the individual's doing it his own, obviously, no one will honor that.
You and I know, if you hire, you as a town, hire a consultant, consultant will look for your interest and not the interest of the opposed party.
It has to also be fair and reasonable.
So you know that very well. Anyways, move on. Personally, I can tell you, this bylaw should be re-discussed in caucus before it passes. But if you wish to pass it, I will vote no for it. I will, I will, I'll be against it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it has to be modified at my suggestion to indicate the word greater instead of the difference.
So if nobody wants to second the discussion on this bylaw, does anyone understand?
I'll second it. I afford you that respect, for sure.
Thank you. Now, I will bring it to the floor.
Well, wait a minute. We have to do one thing at a time. First comes the modification. So councillor Shaffer is suggesting modifying the bylaw so that it says greater than, rather than different. Would somebody second councillor Shaffer's suggestion?
Goldwax.
Yeah.
Councilor Goldwax. Now, we have to vote on that, that modification to the wording. Who is opposed to that modification?
But you can't vote for that, as, just taking, think about, there was no, it was written already with the greater word in it.
Now, there'll be a vote on that in a minute. There'll be a vote on the amended by law.
Can I just interject one second, and I think councillor Fassi has brought up some valid points, which I think merits a further discussion. And as councillor Fassi stated, I don't think there's an urgency to pass this on December 21st. And I don't know, maybe there is, but I'm saying, can we have a discussion caucus, whether today or another day, and look to push this to, defer this to a subsequent council meeting in January?
Yes, whatever the majority of council wants to do, so let's...
I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of that, and I think, you know, there's different opinions brought up. Let's, yeah, let's, let's go back and re-discuss when we look at it.
If there's no urgency, I'm in favor of it.
So, okay, and I suggest that Mario should come to this meeting with us when we discuss it, and bring all the pros and cons, because that's important to hear from our professionals as well.
Yes, well, this was discussed when we passed the first draft, but nevertheless...
No, I think, I agree. It was discussed, and certainly maybe discussed it more than others. But I think councillor Fassi brings up a good point and some concerns, and I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure everyone's comfortable with the decision. So no problem.
No problem. So would someone please move deferment of this item?
Yeah, councillor Budner.
Okay, seconded by?
Eddy.
Councillor Eddy. Anyone opposed to deferring the item?
No.
No, nobody's opposed. Okay, so, the item is deferred. I am asking our town clerk to please change the word different to greater, because it's obvious that if we are going to pass it, we'll want it to say greater and not different. But we're, we're changing our minds. We're not passing it. We are deferring it. It will be back on the January 11th agenda. And during caucus, we will have our head of urban planning explain why he feels we need to do this, and we'll discuss it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's okay, I would defer it. I suggest that after the caucus, you give me all the modification that you want, and I'll take the modification at that time, so to be changed on the, on the 11th of January.
Well, okay, but there is only one modification, and it's...
Yeah, but maybe during the caucus, you're going to make some others, so to bring me everything...
The caucus will be on the 11th here. I think the caucus will be prior to the meeting of the 11th.
So, okay, but as soon you know what you want exactly, you let me know, and I change the bylaw accordingly.
Yes, correct.
Not a problem. Okay, so moving on, that brings us to number seven. Adoption of bylaw 1029 about towing. On motion of councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor?
Shaffer.
Shaffer. It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1029 entitled Bylaw About Towing in the Town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. That just allows us to tow cars if necessary. 8.0, granting of a contract for the purchase of annual flowers for 2021. On motion of councillor?
Goldwax.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor. Eddy. It is resolved that the contract for the purchase of annual flowers for 2021 be granted to Le Jourdain WG Charlebois Inc. at a cost of $22,850.04, taxes included. Anyone opposed?
No, I'm just happy to just publicly state that other than Pepinier Maschkuh, who's always been bidding, I see some other bidders, which is nice to see, so I'm happy.
Yeah, well, only two bidders actually, but-
I know, but there was four, no, four, two bids came in, but four, was it, four was, four people picked up the bid and two were submitted, but Pepinier Maschkuh was not, was not one of them.
Yeah, they weren't. Okay, thank you. And number nine determined on motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that this council meeting be adjourned. Anyone opposed? Okay, so this meeting is adjourned and it is now past 7:30. So we are going to immediately move to the special council meeting. And if you'll just give me a second, I'm going to get to the right place.
Armin, are you there?
I hope so, we'll need him. Okay, I'm now in the right place.
Does someone have to invite him, Jack?
Um, Terry has to.
Supposed to be there. Anyways, I just, I basically just need him in case there's a number I don't know, so.
Armin and Eve are there. Armin and Eve are present.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Bill.
Okay, so did I hear someone say Armin is here? Okay, if he is, good. Yeah, there's echo, somebody has to turn off something. Okay, fine. So there are no new questions, which brings us, the meeting's open. The first thing is presentation of the 20-
Before that, I would like to make a motion to add 6.8.
6.1, yeah, so we're going to be okay.
Six point, oh, 6.1.
Yeah, 6.1.
What was deferred in the previous meeting.
Right, so adoption of the bylaw 1026 about the tax rate. It's 6.1, yeah, okay.
Would someone second that?
Shafer.
Councillor Shafer. Anyone opposed? Okay, so 6.1, which will be the adoption of the tax rates, which was deferred from the previous meeting, will appear at that point after we have adopted the budget. So we will start now then with the presentation of the 2021 budget.
Okay.
There, well, actually, did we adopt the agenda? No. So first we have to adopt the agenda. The agenda has amended one second ago. On motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. The amended agenda with the other item is hereby adopted as submitted. Anyone opposed?
No.
So that's what we're doing now and we'll move into presentation of the 2021 budget. And then we'll have the presentation of the PTI Capital Works Part of the Budget. And then we will vote on those. Then I think we have questions and after that we will vote on the budget. Or both parts of the budget. Okay, so let's go.
Okay, so basically, this is the budget for 2021. So 2020 is coming in within budget. It's been a strange year with COVID. We've had about $500,000 extra in expenses related to COVID. We're anticipating a surplus in 2020, but only because we're looking at a million dollar grant eventually from Quebec to offset our COVID-related expenses. 2021 budget, we're looking at 16,272 and another 11,580,000 for the agglomeration share.
Jack, Jack, one second. Is somebody, oh, okay, somebody is going to open the pages as you go through the material?
Yeah, Armin's doing that.
Okay.
Armin's going to show, so everybody basically has this, this budget presentation thing, the summary is on the website. If anybody wants to get a copy of it, it's there. And you can follow along now on, on, on the share screen or you can pick it up off of the website, or you can pick it up off the website afterwards to review it more closely. The average single-family home, we're looking at local tax increase of below inflation of 1.35%. And that's going to be combined with the aglo share, producing a combined tax increase of 1.83%. So Montreal is having a 0% local tax rate increases, but they're offloading their tax rates to the aglo. Thank you very much, Montreal. Capital investments, we're looking at 5.5 million this year. It's quite high. We'll go to the next page. We'll start off with the expenditures. I'll do a quick review of the expenditures. The, you have to take into consideration that 2020 and 2021 are really very strange years as far as COVID is concerned. So COVID has really affected pretty much everything, from day camps to hockey, to, to conferences that we go to, to food, to overtime, to everything. So a lot of this stuff is estimates. Certain things we've put in here that we don't know for certain are going to happen. Like the, the winter carnival, we can't be certain. I would think it's probably not going to happen, but it's still in the budget because we want to be able to have that available for next year. We don't want to have a hole in the budget for the following year. So stuff that we're unsure of, we budget for anyways. If it doesn't happen, we have extra revenue. If it does happen, I mean, if it, if it does happen, we, we're, we're covered. But this way, at least we don't wind up with, with a hole. I'll only take it out if it's something that we think is, is killed altogether. We're not going to be continuing with it in the future. So general admin, we're looking at a 0.6% increase. That covers a lot of territory. Council, finance, director general, IT, town clerk, human resources and admin expenses. So that's a very small increase. Public works, an increased expenditure of 2.2%. There, we're looking at transportation, environmental. So basically it's public works and water, garbage. The next place where we actually have a large change is town planning and building inspection. That's a 23.8% increase. The reason we've got that is twofold. We're looking at a new inspector hired and that's going to be in the $60,000 range. And there are going to be two inspectors who are having echelon changes. And that increases the, the cost of, from a salary point of view. Recreation and culture, the CSR basically, we're looking at a 2.7% decrease. COVID overall with, with regards to CSR is, is generally a wash. We took, I think about 60,000 or 70,000 into consideration for this year, for 2021. But generally, the revenue and the expenses are directly linked. So if you don't do something, you don't have the revenue, but you also don't have the associated expense. So that's generally a wash. That's what we found pretty much in, in 2020 with regards to the camp. Legal insurance and other fees, up 5.6%. Pension deficit contribution, this is the number that we got from our actuaries, Mercer. There, we're looking at a 21.6% increase. So it's gone from 34.2 to 41.6. That's basically because they look at our, our pension as an ongoing concern. And in order to be feasible on an ongoing basis, they increase, they told us that we needed to increase our, our annual paying, payment of that. The next thing is financing. So financing has gone up by 19.2%. So yeah, that's actually kind of, it's tricky to say it's not an actual increase in the expense of 19.2% because of the 2.156 that we've gotten 2021, a million 243 of that is the PTI fund. So an increase in the PTI fund is actually a good thing. That means that we've got more money in our PTI fund for annual, a more recurring funds in our PTI fund for recurring PTI thing. So roads, oh my God, my battery is about to die. Okay, hold on a second. Sorry, battery is dying. I need to plug in. Where the heck is this thing? Okay, is that it? Nope, that's not it. Shit, but didn't plan on this. Hold on. Damn it. No, hello? Sorry, I'm having a battery issue here. Okay, okay, we're back, sorry. Okay, so the, yeah, so basically with regards to financing, we're looking, on paper, it looks like a 19.2% increase. We're saying, hey, wow, how come our financing costs have gone up by 19.2%? It's not really the case that our financing costs have gone up by 19.2% because a million 243 of the 2,156 is PTI fund. PTI fund is something that we created a couple of years back in order to be able to have ongoing funding in our budget for PTI-related expenses. Rather than having to borrow or pull money from surplus, we actually have recurring funds annually for this. So an increase in our PTI is actually a good thing as opposed to an increased expense. We do have an extra 161,000 of new borrowing costs, principal and interest costs. With regards to, it'll come up later, where we've got 2.4 million of new borrowing coming online. But so that's the actual, the actual increase in financing is the 161,000. It's not the, the rest of it. Loans reimbursed by grants, it's a 0.5% decrease. Public security, we're looking at a 14.4% increase. That is not new officers. What happened is in 2020, we brought in auxiliary, new auxiliary officers. And part of that was so we could have coverage of the synagogues on Saturdays and have just more general coverage. The problem is that the amount that we expected for the cost for these new auxiliaries was actually lower than, than, was, was, sorry, it was higher than we expected. And so the 14.4% increase is just to offset the reality from 2020 going forward into 2021. So we're not bringing on new guys. We're just basically making our budget kind of match the reality of 2020, where we brought, where we already brought in you guys. And then we're looking at a 12.5% increase for CMM. CMM is what Montreal charges us for low-income housing. It's going from 200 to 225,000. It's been at 200 since I can remember. So this, this is, this is an increase, but we would probably prefer that they did small increases every year rather than like larger increases like that. Is there anything else there? The next page, Armin, you want to go to the next page? Armin? Yeah, sorry. So next page, I'm not sure if you can see this. This is basically the exact same thing we spoke about, but in a visual kind of way. So for people who are visual, you can see the breakdown of the expenses. Obviously, the big chunk of it is in public works and administration. And the next big thing is our purple guy there, probably, I can't really make out the colors, but I presume it's a CSR. So this is just more visual, there's nothing, there's no added data on this. You want to go on to the next page, Armin? So revenue, here, we're looking at, so the first thing is local taxes based on property valuations. That's up 1.6%. Compensation in lieu of taxes, that's pretty much what the school pays us. That hasn't changed. So they don't pay property taxes, but they pay us an amount in lieu instead of property taxes. Water tax per consumption is up 4.3%. So basically what happens with water tax is we have this graduated system with regards to the water tax, where we have higher rates for higher usage in order to dissuade people from using too much water or wasting water, not using too much water, wasting water. Essentially what happens here, if you have an increase on the revenue side, you're going to have an increase on, on the expense side as well because we changed the envelope, the way the envelope works, but the envelope itself stays the same. So it's a wash between what comes in and what goes out. Property transfer duties, this is always a large one. Here, we're looking at an 18.3% difference. So transfer taxes were hit by COVID. We had a 2020 budget estimate of a million 690. We are looking at coming in probably at about a million five. And then we go from a million five to 2 million in 2021. The reason we're going from a million five, of what we estimate, to 2 million in 2021 is because we've brought in a new tax on, a new graduated tax, which was allowed two years ago to allow us to have a graduated tax on property transfers, which is a function of the value as opposed to just a flat tax on all property transfers. So it's a marginal tax. The higher the property goes, the, the higher the rate is on a marginal basis. So we knew about this, about, well, I was told about this about two years ago. And at the time, I thought that it was not something that we needed at the time because it was not something that, I wanted to keep it as a reserve. And now that we're dealing with COVID, we actually need this. And part of the funds go towards our new fund, which is basically the PTI fund. So the extra revenue now can be funneled to something, which is the PTI fund, which allows us again for that recurring, the recurring revenue for, for capital expenses. The next thing is permits and licenses. Permits and licenses, the revenue is down 5.4%. The, the same thing for the next one, which is fines and penalties. These are definitely just COVID-related things, there's less activity. So we have a 19.2% decrease in fines and penalties. That's tickets. And also interest. So what we've done here in 2021 in order to alleviate the impact of COVID on taxpayers is we've, we've changed the interest rate on outstanding tax arrears, and that comes in over here, from 12% to 7%. So we've got about currently about, at one point, our usual number around this time is around 4% of people in arrears. Then it had peaked to about 5% of people in arrears, which, which represents about another 20 households. But now, as the latest numbers I got today is that we're pretty much at the same level as we were last year as far as arrears are concerned. So in total, that's going to cost us $60,000 in, in lost interest. And the idea is basically it's going to help those people who really need it the most, which are basically the people who are in such a position that they, they, they are having a hard time actually paying- that they, they, they are having a hard time actually paying their taxes. And so rather than, you know, profiting off of them, we're, we're trying to give them some kind of break. The next thing is, um, is CSR, Recreation and Culture. Uh, the revenue is down twenty three point seven percent. So there you're looking at COVID, that's the camp, uh, pool. Things that are not affected are tennis, we're keeping that the same. And hockey, um, we're keeping the same. Um, we're keeping the same hockey as a net basis. Except we're, we're doing, we're, it's going to show up differently on the budget. Usually what we used to do is we used to, um, we used to get billed by, uh, Montreal West, uh, like a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And then we would offset from that the amount that we got in from the hockey players. Now we no longer get those payments directly from the hockey players. That goes directly to the association. And we just pay the net amount. So long story short, the net amounts in two thousand twenty and the net amounts in twenty twenty one is about thirty eight thousand dollars. That's what it costs us net in order to have a hockey program, which I gotta tell you is really, really cheap considering Montreal West, uh, has to maintain, well, maybe I shouldn't mention it. Montreal West has to maintain, uh, an entire arena and, and it costs us about thirty eight thousand for, for our people. So I think that's, that's a really, it's a great deal. We'll see, um, government grants. There we've got a huge change from three hundred and seventy one thousand to eight hundred and thirty eight thousand, so a hundred and twenty five percent change. And the reason for that, the vast majority of that is four hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, from the provincial government. So the provincial government is giving us a grant, uh, of, um, envelope of up to a million dollars to cover COVID related expenses for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. There's some interesting accounting rules with regards to that, but at the end of the day, uh, we are, uh, taking into consideration four hundred, well, we are appropriating from surplus four hundred thousand dollars, uh, for, to, to cover twenty twenty one's COVID related expenses that we expect to have. And among those is a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in, uh, in property transfers and a decrease in, uh, in fines and, and penalties. So four hundred thousand dollars, uh, but that's going to be made up for by the provincial grant, uh, that four hundred and, uh, a further six hundred depending on, on what our final tally is as far as COVID related costs are. Also with regards to government grants, the provincial government reinstated the fifty eight thousand dollar QST refund. So we're going to be getting that as well. Interest, interest revenue is down twenty percent. So that pretty much is, uh, due to the, um, the, the rate decrease from twelve to seven percent on tax arrears. So, uh, that's that. And then miscellaneous, miscellaneous is a catchall kind of thing that covers the ten thousand little things. And it varies from year to year, um, by great amounts. In this particular, um, estimate, we're looking at a twenty one percent difference or about twenty two thousand dollars or twenty three thousand dollar difference. Is there anything else? Notes that I had? Okay, I think that pretty much covers that. Armin, you want to go to the next page? Again, here we have revenue, but in a visual way, um, it looks more like a Pac-Man on the left. So it's kind of easy. Taxes, uh, local taxes and other revenue, uh, sixteen point three million. So that's the breakdown you've got there. Local and, um, other revenue sources. I'm, I'm not going to bother just reiterating everything just for the pie chart. It's the same information that we had in the previous one. Want to go to the next? Okay, tax rates. Okay, so what we're looking at here is local, average single family home. So we always do it based on average, single family home. Our local tax, uh, is going to go up by one point three five percent. So there was a question there with regards to how much we should raise it and whether we should raise it. Um, and the general, um, idea at the end was that if you don't raise it, then you will wind up having a hole in your budget that you're going to have to make up the following year. So we decided to keep up with inflation or slightly less than inflation. But in order to give residents a break, we gave them a break from the, uh, on the relief on the tax arrears rather than giving a broad relief across the board. So in our case, this one point three five percent for an average single family home represents about an eighty seven dollar increase. The aglo increase is two point four, two point three four percent, which represents about a hundred and forty five dollar increase. And blended, uh, well, together, um, I think we're looking at, uh, yeah, uh, forty five, about two hundred and thirty one dollar increase overall. So that's, uh, that's for the, the tax rate. I think that's pretty much the number, the one number everybody wants to know. Want to continue? Armin to, okay, yeah, okay. This, um, our accumulated surplus. I have to tell you, actually, you know what? This is just a really confusing page that's going to confuse people. At the end of the day, I'm just going to tell you with the way I understand it rather than, than this, because if I take you through this, it's not going to, uh, to be clear. Hold on a second, the total surplus numbers, they somewhere here. Okay. So the total surplus numbers that we had going into twenty twenty one are a three point two million dollar surplus plus a one million dollar buffer that we always keep. Plus a one million dollars in our PTI line. So the PTI line shows up as surplus. So the total is five point two million dollars going into twenty twenty one. Add to that, so from, on, from there, we're going to deduct the, what we spend in, from surplus on the PTI for a twenty twenty one. But add to that, we're going to have about the million dollar, uh, grant from Quebec, of which four hundred thousand is already taken for the, um, for twenty twenty one budget, um, to offset the COVID, the COVID expenses. Plus we expect to add to that another two million dollars for, or roughly two million dollars for the sale of the public works yard. So it's a five point two, six, seven, uh, five, six, seven, uh, about eight point two. Uh, and then from that, from, so total of about eight point two. And then from that you'll deduct about a million dollars for the two thousand twenty one PTI. So we'll wind up with somewhere around in the vicinity of seven point two million, uh, of available surplus. And that actually does not include the money that's in our, sorry, that doesn't include the money that's, that's in our park fund, which is a surplus money also, but it's a segregated fund, which you can only use in the parks. Want to move on to the next page? Evolution of the debt, basically this is our chart since two thousand eleven. So it's gone from about thirteen million in debt, uh, to twenty twenty one. We dropped to the lowest, that was the end of, that was twenty twenty. We hadn't done any new borrowing. And twenty twenty one, you see it goes up from about, uh, five million to about, uh, well, uh, actually, what's the exact number here? Hold on a second. Okay. So here we've got, uh, basically it, it starts peaking back up in twenty twenty one because we're taking on two point four million of, of new borrowing. And then we'll get into that in the next section, which is the, uh, the PTI, because that's where the new borrowing is. So Armin, you want to move on to the next page? All right. So now we're moving on to PTI. PTI is our capital projects for the year. It's our projections. Sorry, let me just pull this up. Okay, fine. Here we go. Okay, so the first thing that, just in order is, uh, community services and recreation. So the, oh, actually, we're doing this in a different order than, than my regular budget. Okay, so we'll do this according to this one. Okay, so public security, we're looking at a new vehicle for sixty six thousand. CS, um, public works has a hydraulic vibrating plate for thirty six thousand. Basically it's a, a jack plate that stamps down or tamps down, uh, the road as opposed to doing it with, by hand. So we're using one of those, attaches to the back of the backhoe. Concrete asphalt saw, we've got an old one, it's dangerous, we're changing it, dump truck, ninety four thousand. Just, this is regular kind of, uh, public works type stuff. Stock room, garage, um, shelving and renovation, another ten thousand. Public Works Garage Sewer Pump, that actually goes to twenty twenty two, road and sidewalk rehabilitation. So the big things, uh, really are, um, the roads and sidewalks. And so the roads and sidewalks and the public works, uh, yard, um, new building that we're, that we're looking to do. So, um, we're looking at one and a quarter. We're looking at one and a, uh, sorry, I've got a lot of information here. Just want to get the numbers right. So we're looking at, there we go, hockey costs, grants, transfer tax. So total new borrowing is going to be a two point four million dollars. We're looking at one and a quarter million dollars for a new, uh, public works building. And that is, um, part of a larger process. We've got the Dufferin Works Yard that's being subdivided into, well, forty, forty and twenty percent. The forty percent to the right is going, which is essentially vacant now, but it's just full of like, um, well, storage stuff, kind of garbage, is going to be sold for development of townhouses. This is the project that's been in the works for like, I don't know, at least the last eight years. And we expect that that should be generating somewhere in the vicinity of two million dollars. Plus six townhouses, which will generate about sixty thousand dollars a year in extra tax revenue. And then the center part, which is where the circle is, is going to become a green buffer space between the townhouses and what will remain of the public works yard. And on the public works yard, we're looking to build a, um, a storage building there for public works. And so there we're looking at one and a quarter million. So, uh, currently it's set for, uh, for borrowing for one and a quarter million. Uh, I'm still hoping to convince council to just take part of the sale of the proceeds, uh, proceeds of sale and, and use that. But, uh, that's for a discussion of a different day. And then we've got roads and sewers and we're looking at about a million and a quarter there for roads and, roads and, uh, roads and sidewalks. So, you want to go, uh, well, we've also got Ellerdale Road Reconstruction. So this is something that's happening in twenty twenty two. It's not even happening in twenty twenty two. This is something we keep pushing off. This is something that's problematic. This is something that we need to deal with. This is something that Montreal's problem is, is they've got this huge water main underneath Ellerdale, um, and it's passed its useful life. And if it breaks, it's going to cause havoc, um, with huge, I mean, just not any kind of water main break we've ever seen before. And so that's our problem with Ellerdale is we can't do any world work on Ellerdale because if we do, we might trigger a break. So we need to basically work with Montreal and they're not really being very forthcoming with that. With regards to the sewers, just above that, we've actually brought back more sewers, about a million dollars of extra sewers from, uh, after the, 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 the grant. We have this grant process, which is a five year grant process, which goes until twenty twenty three, I believe, at the end of twenty twenty three. So we brought back money from after twenty twenty three because, uh, if we leave it after twenty twenty three, then we don't get the grant for it. So we brought that back to, uh, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Road and sidewalk rehabilitation, we spoke to that already. Public Works Sewer, uh, okay, so that's pretty much that page. Is there anything else on the next page? Armin, you want to go to the next page or is there something else? This next page, yes. Okay, so here, a lot of stuff. Twenty thousand for archiving. So basically we can stay up to, we, we meet the, the provincial government's laws with regards to holding documents. Public work building renovations, a hundred and thirty six thousand. It's an old building. It needs to be kept up. Public work building, new storage facility. So we already spoke to that. It's a million two fifty. That's part of the, 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 um, the public works yard reorganization. Then we move into IT, hardware, increasing network performance and security, ten, fifteen eight. This is ongoing work by Thierry, who we all love and admire. Software, eighty seven thousand, website development, interactive services for residents, ninety seven thousand three hundred. This is basically the smart city and continuation of smart city. Allowing people to do things that they would have had to have, uh, either gone into town hall for, or have to print something up and then, uh, submit it. So if you want to get a permit to, uh, have for your dog, you can do this online. If you want to get a permit for small renovations, you can do this online or you will do this online. We've already, okay, we've spoken to this before, the tennis court rehabilitation. It's not really rehabilitation. It's a complete rip out and redo of the tennis courts for seven hundred and eighty two thousand. That'll happen most likely after the twenty twenty one tennis season. So that it won't impact use of the twenty twenty one season, but will, um, be there for the next season. Fifty two thousand for a tents. This has two purposes. One is for the camp so that the campers can do stuff during the summer if it's raining. And also this helps with, um, the, um, the concerts in the park series that Cheryl and Doris, uh, brought in, which is very successful and which, uh, unfortunately is, um, is impacted by weather, but so with the tents, then it won't be impacted by weather and we'll be able to have, uh, hopefully, we'll hopefully be able to have people in the park and we'll hopefully get past all this COVID stuff and be able to have these, these, uh, these events rain or shine. Hampstead Park, various upgrades. This is, uh, basically decorative benches and decorative garbage cans, uh, for twenty seven thousand. Omong Park Fence Replacement. This Omong Park has this old, uh, rickety fence that is problematic and that's being changed. And the last thing is the resupply of, uh, trees, uh, in seventy nine thousand. What this doesn't show is what goes in as surplus, what come, what's paid by surplus, what's paid by debt and what's paid by park fund. Certainly these things like the, uh, Omong Park, uh, the, um, the, the changes to the, um, the, well, the, the, uh, the, the benches, but not the garbage cans are paid by, by the park fund. The new trees that are in the park are paid by a park fund. And so that's about that. Okay, Armin, you want to go to the next page? And then this just basically is a recap for all those visual people out there. Parks and green spaces, what we're spending is nine hundred and thirty one thousand. Building and administration, a million six forty nine. Machinery and equipment, a hundred and thirty one thousand, water and sewer network, six hundred and eighteen thousand. Six hundred and eighteen thousand is covered by the way by grants. Roads and sidewalks, two million fifty and vehicles, a hundred and sixty thousand. And that pretty much covers the, uh, budget and PTI for, um, twenty twenty one.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you mentioned the public security vehicle for 2021 for $66,000, from what I know, we're not planning to buy any public security vehicle. We have all, we have, the oldest public security that we have now is a little over a year old and the last one we just put on the road. So why would we buy another one?
We still have a public security van on the road.
I don't think we're going, I don't think we, before the Ford Explorers came on site, we only had vans. Now that we have three Ford Explorers, I don't think we'll be needing any vans. Three is more than enough.
We still, we still have a van on the road. So
But I think that's going to be coming off pretty quickly. I don't think we're going to be replacing the van and a van wouldn't cost $66,000.
No, 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 we're not replacing it with a van. We're replacing it with a Ford Explorer. What I'm saying is we're still running a van on the road. If, if, if it turns out that we don't need to have an extra vehicle, then no problem. What we generally did in the past with the vans is instead of budgeting them, instead of budgeting it and saying, okay, every three years I have to buy a new van, what we did, the same way with the elections, is we budgeted partial every year. So we do a third, a third, a third every year because I know it's going to come up. So I don't need to be surprised with a jump every third year and nothing in the intermediary years. It's the same thing we do with the election. We budget $25,000. I don't know if we're going to be spending this on this van, on this truck. We're not doing the van, obviously.
The whole plan to go to Ford Explorers so that they would last longer than vans. The plan was that Ford Explorers would last five years.
Yes, yes. So we'll have to see. If it lasts that period of time, great, no problem. If we don't need a Ford Explorer, then that's great. That's that's coming out of surplus. So I'll be glad not to have to use that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to make a few comments on the budget. I promise you, I will be brief. Okay, and then after that, we will have the public question period dealing with the budget. I see we have at least three questions that have come in. So I'm not going to take you through every line and detail and so on. I know people mostly want to know what is the tax increase going to be. You know that already. So I do want to highlight a few things, though. One is the fact that urban planning has gone up by 23.8%. That might concern me, except for the fact that we need these people and we end up coming out way ahead. There has been an incredible amount of of action on the urban planning front, renovations, additions, modifications, new buildings, demolition, everything. To give you an idea of just how packed things are, we had a PA Planning and Architectural Committee meeting last week. We could only get through about half of the items. We have another one to finish tomorrow night. And normally, in normal times, it's one meeting a month. Having two a month is really exceptional. We have an incredible amount of work to be done. But that also means we're making all this new revenue for demolitions. We're making 10% of land value as Park Fund, some of which, quite a bit of which is going to be used this year, which I'll talk about in a minute. So it's not bad that we're up 23.8%. It's actually a reflection of the fact that the town is doing very, very well in that area. The other one, public security, it's up by 14.4%. This is mostly because of COVID. We needed to have more officers around, more places to make sure that the Quebec government regulations were being respected. And the way things are going, that's going to continue into 2021. Hence, we need more money over there. However, the extra money, as has been mentioned, a lot of it is auxiliaries. We have some flexibility. It's not new permanent staff. So we have flexibility. And if things go back to normal, then the budget for public security will go back to normal as well. Which brings me to the revenue side. The revenue side for transfer duties, what everybody knows as welcome tax. Last meeting, we passed a new bylaw which has raised the welcome tax amounts, bringing us in line with most of the towns on the island. As a result, we'll be getting $500,000 more per year is the best estimate. So that is very, very important and very happy about that. There were some big decreases, fines and penalties down 19%. Less traffic tickets, way, way down because of COVID. The police had more important things to do than issue traffic tickets. The recreation, down 23.7%. Obviously, due to COVID, numerous events had to be canceled. Very happy, at least we had a very successful pool and tennis season. And then there is 125, 126% increase in government grants. That's basically money from the Quebec government to compensate us for all these extra expenses we had due to COVID. Okay, that's all I wanted to talk about in terms of revenues and expenses. So you can see, I promised you I wouldn't take a lot of time. I'm not. One of the more important things that is new in this budget is borrowing. We borrowed, when I first came into office, we borrowed $4.4 million interest-free, which was a very good deal. We were the only town on the island who took it. Interest-free money for infrastructure helped us tremendously. And we haven't borrowed since then. This year, for the first time, we are borrowing. And I want to explain why because, first of all, it makes sense to do it now. Interest rates are record lows, record lows, and they're expected to continue low. Could change, but right now it's expected to continue low. So if ever there was a time to borrow, this is a great time to do it. Secondly, and this is most important, it's fairer to taxpayers to borrow for long-life assets. We're borrowing $2.375 million, roughly $2.4 million, for things that will last 20 or 40 years. The borrowed money is for the new Public Works Building, $1.25 million. That's going to last at least 40 years. It's for sidewalk work. That lasts 20, 40 years for sure. It's for conduits under the roads, the wiring, so that for the roads that have the new conduits, you will have less breaks, less power failures. And if you have one, it'll be very fast and easy to fix. There is other work for adjusting sewer grades and things like that. All in all, it's another $1.15 million, bringing us, all of which will last for a very, very long time. So by doing this, it means that if we charge, like we used to, the full amount to this year's taxpayers, it means that this year's taxpayers pay the full thing. And if they move out of town next year or the year after, or any time within 20 years, they paid for future residents who are going to get the benefits of today's residents paying in advance. It's not fair. It's much fairer to spread the cost out over many years. Now, this assumes that we have the capacity to borrow. Now, we certainly have the capacity to borrow for two reasons. One, our debt, our debt is the lowest of similar-sized towns on the island of Montreal, the lowest. And so we certainly have capacity. The second reason we have capacity, let's say that all of a sudden, interest rates start going up. So because we have to refinance every five years. So let's say in five years, interest rates have shot up. Well, we have huge surplus amounts. And every year, we seem to have surpluses. And if we redevelop Coatsand Loop Road, as I personally expect we will be doing, that's an awful lot of additional money that will be coming in. So I'm really not concerned about our capacity to support this amount of debt. So that's very important that we have done that. Now, even after
I just give the the other opinion on that. There's, we're of two opinions on this and it was very contentious, I think, in council. And I'm, I'm of the opinion that if we're sitting on a very large surplus, that we should be using that accumulated surplus. That from my point of view, it doesn't make sense to borrow at 3% when I'm sitting on a surplus money that I'm only getting 1.25% on. I free up more cash flow and I'd rather be able to have that cash flow go into my recurring PTI and fund my recurring projects rather than go into funding financing payments. And I think it also gives us more flexibility. Borrowing is good if you're going to leverage and make more money. Borrowing is necessary if you have to. But if you're sitting on a lot of cash and we're sitting on more cash than we've ever sat on, I don't see the point of borrowing when we're sitting on that kind of cash. But given that they're long-term assets, I'm willing to live with it. I don't think it's ideal, but I'm willing to live with it.
We've already spent hours discussing this in caucus. This decision has been made. The majority of council is in favor of doing what we're doing. And I would add that this is what's done by all towns. All towns borrow for long-life assets. It's as simple as that. Now, without any further interruptions.
Going into this, we weren't borrowing just for long-life assets. We were also borrowing for seven-year roads, which council decided to reverse. So it's a balance.
Yes, as you said, we are not anymore borrowing for anything that isn't a long-life asset. I've explained that already. What was passed is passed. Those discussions are over. Now, I'd like to move forward if you'll permit me. Thank you.
That's fine.
So after all this new borrowing will be at $6.63 million of net debt, which will still leave us as one of the lowest, if not the lowest, on the island of Montreal. Okay, I want to mention a few of the capital projects which are important. We'll be spending, let me see, about $2,050,000. This is for roads, sidewalks, sewer grade adjustments, and the conduit for lampposts. That's important. We will be spending $1.25 million on new Public Works Building. I know I have a question coming in on this, so I will address that in more detail a little bit later. And very important, we're going to be spending $782,000 on our tennis courts. Now, this is resurfacing, redoing the irrigation under the surface, putting in new tennis lights, bringing us up to the standards of all the best tennis courts. We have excellent clay tennis courts. By the time we finish doing all of this, we will clearly have the best tennis courts on the island of Montreal. And it has to be done because our courts will fall apart if we don't do it. Okay, and last, no more for me to talk about today. I'll just give you a plug. When you get your tax bills in whatever period of time in January, please read my usual letter that I include with the tax bills and you'll have the whole story about what is happening. So I invite you to read that when you get it. Okay, at this point, we go to the public question period and we have some questions. Bear with me while I struggle to to move this thing along. First question is from Morton Grostern. And he asked, why is $1.25 million for a new storage building for Public Works? What's wrong with the present setup? Okay, as I was saying a minute ago, I want to address this. So let me explain. Right now, we have a Public Works Yard full of all kinds of debris and junk and vehicles and so on and so forth. The idea, which came up actually really quite a few years ago, was why don't we see if we can take half of the Public Works Yard, namely, the half that's closer to McDonald's, and see if we can clear out the stuff that's there and just use the other half of the Public Works Yard. If we do that, we can sell that land and a developer can build five or six townhouses over there. That will generate new revenue. We're figuring about $60,000 new revenue as a result of that. We'll make, we're estimating $2 million on the sale of the land. And then the only issue, so that's all good. And of course, we want to do that for the long-suffering residents who live on Dufferin. Near the Public Works Yard, it removes a lot of the beep, beep, beep that drives them crazy in the middle of the night when our trucks have to back up and the smells sometimes that existed over there and so on. So it's a huge improvement there. It's good for the town, the extra revenue, of course, and it's good for the residents in the area. So that brings us to the other half of the Public Works Yard. That's where the new Public Works Building is going to go. I've been assured, it's been studied many, many times. I've been assured by Public Works Management that this new building will allow us to house everything that we have to, given that we're giving up half of the Public Works Yard. And of course, it will also hide most of the rest of the Public Works Yard, which is good for the residents in the area. It will be neater, cleaner, and our machines will be protected from the elements by being indoors. Some stuff that, materials that need to be protected as well will be by being indoors. So this is a win-win all the way around. It's good for everybody. And that's why we need to spend the money. Now, you could also ask, and I'll tell you, even if you're not, why are we spending the money right now? We haven't sold the land. Well, the answer is, we have to be ready. We have to have that Public Works Building up by the time the land is sold or at least by the time we allow someone to start building on that area. We have to have a place for, for our vehicles and our supplies and so on. So hence, we are going to borrow the money. It's a long-life asset of these 40 years. So we're borrowing the money and we're getting going just as soon as we can. Okay, now, second question from Morton Grostern. Are we getting electric vehicles instead of gas-powered ones? Yes, we are certainly going to be moving in that direction. The new public security vehicle that was talked about is a hybrid. The vehicle for inspector, building inspector is a hybrid. But you can't get, at least it doesn't work so well if you try to get electric or hybrids for those 10-wheeler trucks. They don't have enough power, at least not today. So there's only certain things, public security vehicles, yes. Building inspectors cars, yes. Those are excellent things to be hybrid or electric because they're driven an awful lot and that's where it pays. But the heavy-duty vehicles doesn't work yet. The other thing, of course, is we need charging stations. We are planning to put in charging stations in Hampstead. I don't know how many exactly when, but it is something that I anticipate being in our new urban master plan and something that we're going to be doing. And that'll make it easier to have more electric or hybrid vehicles. So yes, it's coming a little bit already, more in the future. Okay, anonymous says, is the software disbursement to upgrade the town from the ancient Windows 7 to the current version? To be honest, I'm not sure which version of Windows the town is using. I personally use Windows 10, so I don't, I don't honestly know what they're doing. But I do know our, our one-man IT department, Thierry, is very much on top of all the best and latest things. So very little of that software So very little of that software dispersment would be for upgrading. I don't know if we have upgraded, or if we're going to be upgrading, but very little of that would be for upgrades. It's for a number of smart city initiatives, as was mentioned earlier. Okay, anonymous again, same or different, anonymous.
Before, Mr. Mayor, before you go on, can I just add one thing to your comments for the upgrades and software? We have moved all of our soft computers, it's actual, not computers, but actual workstations, and everything's in the cloud. We're using Office 365, which is all virtual. So more and more protect us and protect the data of the residents and all of our files, being everything in the cloud, and that's where we're migrating everything there. So to echo the point you say, we are doing the newest and the greatest things available to protect the information of the residents, and also all the work that we have as well.
Yes, I thank you for that. And I don't know if you know, are we using Windows 10?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think any of our computer systems are on Windows 7 anymore. Windows 10 is like the basic, basic foundation of use, right?
Business, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I suspect, I don't absolutely not 100%, but I suspect-
In fact, I believe that it's required to update to Windows 10, because Windows stopped doing service updates for anything below that, as of January 2020. So I don't think, from a security standpoint, our IT director would allow us to be in anything but Windows 10.
Yeah, I am sure you're all right, and I would tend to agree with you, and I thank you for mentioning all that. I also want to say, yes, we are certainly in the cloud. We have no more physical servers anymore. Everything is in the cloud, and Thierry is absolutely magnificent when it comes to protecting us. We have not knocked wood, but I don't think so. But we have not had any ransomware attacks or other such thing. We are very, very cautious. And the other key thing about all this is because we are so much in the cloud, because we don't use actual, physical computers anymore, we were able to switch to remote work really, really easily, quickly and easily, and that was magnificent. Other companies had to scramble and do all kinds of things to get up to speed. We were up to speed almost instantly. So that's the story. Okay, next, anonymous, male or female, whichever. "Where can one get details on the tennis court rehabilitation plan for the 2022 season?" Okay, well, as I kind of briefly mentioned, the basic details is we have to totally dig up the courts. We have to put in new, upgrade new irrigation underneath. It's gradually falling apart. It's all falling apart. And then resurface, and lights. My understanding is the lights will now be on center poles, and those are new. So we can put up the new center poles, because we are digging up the courts. So, and what we're being told is putting lights over there, as opposed to where they are now, will be much, much more comfortable for the tennis players. They won't look up when they serve and be blinded. So that's what we're told by the consultant. I'm not sure when we'll be able to do the work. There's a debate, will we do it before the season starts, after the season? Whichever way we do it, I expect we're going to have to lose a little bit of the season. We'll try to lose as little as possible. My feeling is the odds are it's going to be done after the season, but we'll have to end the season a little bit earlier than normal. We're still working on all the last details. Okay, anonymous again. "Why wasn't the new high tax rate on property transfers brought in two years ago? It seems like you have forfeited the taxpayers out of $1 million." Well, the last time I tried to answer that question, a certain councillor jumped up and down and didn't want me to. So for the sake of-
I'll answer the question if you find. You've accused me already of wasting a million dollars for the town, so I'll answer the question. It's quite simple. In 2018, the government introduced this new rate, which allows you to have a marginal rate for transfer taxes. And at the time, I was in budget meetings for 2019 with my treasurer, and he mentioned it, and I thought, no, we don't need it, because at the time, it was, we didn't need the extra funds. And I wanted to keep it as a reserve in case we ever really did need it. At the end of the day, it is an extra tax. And now, in 2020, it came up again, and the idea was to bring it up for, to add it as a, to the PTI fund, so to be able to go from 1 million to 1.5 million. And I said, okay, well, if you do that, that's reasonable. We're using part of it for the PTI fund. We're using part of it to finance the new debt. So it's a balance. But it's a, there are other ways we can increase tax also. We, according to the Citizens and Towns Act, are allowed to have a tax on all vehicles in our city. I don't think that's a good idea. It's not something that I'm going to propose. And it's not something that our treasurer, or it's not something that our DG, who discussed it with our treasurer, either proposed. So that's about, that's the reason, pretty much simple.
Okay, I thank you. I didn't want, I didn't want, somebody's talking, could they stop talking?
You have an echo.
Echo. So if somebody's causing the echo, please mute yourself. Thank you. Okay, I thank you for, I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but you answered that question. I just want to say, for myself and for all members of council, we didn't know about this possibility until very recently. And as soon as we found out about it, we said, yes, we're doing this. And just last meeting, first you have to have a notice of motion, then you pass the bylaw. It was just passed last meeting. As of that meeting, or the day after, anyone buying a house in Hampstead has to pay the new higher welcome tax. And I want to emphasize, this is a tax only on people who choose to buy houses in Hampstead. And the entire council, including councillor Etteri, eventually decided that this was a good idea. Yes, I would have liked to have an extra million dollars. I can think of all kinds of things that I could do, or the town could do with it, but such is life. I assure you that I have spoken to our finance department. I have made it very, very clear that if they have any ideas that might give us extra revenue, they are to notify me immediately. So this sort of thing won't happen again. If there are opportunities to make money, it makes sense, we will do it. Taxing vehicles is certainly not something we're going to do that affects our existing residents. New residents, if they want to move into Hampstead, and they do, because I can see what's happening to housing prices. They're going up, up and up and up. That's great. They're very, very welcome. But there's no reason why the town shouldn't get the same type of transfer duties that all other towns are getting, just about all the towns on the island are getting. We shouldn't be short-changed there. Okay, next, next question. "It is your job to know this information." Oops, sorry, I have to fix something here. Just blocked my question. Okay, "It is your job to know this information. You lost $1 million for Hampstead." Yes, it's anonymous again. No, I did not lose a million dollars for Hampstead, as I just stated. Soon as I found out about this, it was brought up to council and caucus, and we, everybody, every councillor was of the same opinion of me. Yes, we need the money, and as I said, this will never happen again, because our finance department knows that if they find out things that will help the town, I need to hear about it directly and immediately. So it's not going to happen again. Okay, I think that's it. No more questions. I just have to, give me a second here. He's giving me stuff I don't want. Okay, we're just about to move on. It's public question period. Now, 5.0 addition of the three, sorry, adoption. Adoption of the three-year program of capital expenditures on motion of councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer, segmented by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. "It is resolved that the council approves the 2021, 2022, 2023 capital expenditures program of the town of Hampstead, as presented and deposited at this special council meeting. Anyone opposed?" No, unanimously adopted. Fantastic. I'll make one slight comment here. One key thing, if you were looking at it, and I know councillor Etteri mentioned it, but when you see El Adel $3 million, look, it's not happening next year. I don't know when it's going to happen. We have to convince Montreal to fix their water main. And until then, we can't do it. Councillor Etteri explained it earlier. So if you look at those big numbers, don't worry too much about those big numbers. It's not happening soon. Secondly, while I hope we spend every penny that we budgeted, somehow, it usually turns out that we don't spend every penny. It's part of the reason why we keep ending up with surpluses every year. But I do hope we spend lots of good things in the budget, and I think we need to do these things. I hope we are able to do all of them this time. Okay, oh, and one other thing related to that as well. We talked about the borrowing, I know, but there is the possibility that the borrowing won't actually happen. I think it's the right thing to do. We want it to happen. But the Quebec government has to give us authorization, and it takes a certain period of time. We will prepare the documents, get them out to Quebec, as soon as we can. But if the money doesn't come through in time, well, again, we have the surplus. So it's two separate borrowing bylaws, one for the Public Works Building, one for the roads, etc. If either one or both don't come through in time, we have the necessary surplus. So that's not going to stop us. Okay, but I do think borrowing is better. Okay, 6.0, the budget itself, on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri, segmented by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer is what I heard first. "It is resolved, the council approves the budget of the town of Hampstead of $27,331,896 for the fiscal year 2021, as presented and deposited at this special council meeting. Anyone opposed?" Great, the budget is adopted unanimously, and now we have that other item that councillor Etteri put into the agenda, 6.1. You'll have to bear with me. I have to get back to-
It's the tax rate.
I know it is, but I have to get to the right agenda. This one, this one.
It was number four on the previous.
Yeah, I know. I'm just getting there. Be there in a second. Number four, the previous one.
Yeah, we can pull it up on the screen.
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri, segmented by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. "It is resolved to approve bylaw number 1026, decreeing and imposing the tax rates to cover the town's expenses for the year 2021. Anyone opposed?" No. Okay, and that makes it official for single-family homes, 1.35% local tax increase, 1.83% overall tax increase when we include the agglomerations, excessive 2.6% increase. So that's what the average single-family homeowner can expect. At this point, would someone like to move a German?
Ryan Shafer.
Councillor Goldwack, segmented by councillor Shafer. Anyone opposed? And that wraps up the meeting. I thank everybody who attended. I can't see you, but I thank you very much. I thank you for your questions. And that ends the meeting for the councillors. I think we agreed, we are not doing anything more by in caucus, but we are going to deal with the issues we were talking about before by email. I will send an email later tonight. Anybody else have anything else they want to say? We're live, I remind you. No? In that case-
Well, just, just, because we're not going to have an opportunity, so happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year to all of our constituents and everybody listening.
And stay safe and watch your distancing.
Let me second both of those, and I also want to mention one thing I forgot to say I was planning to. I want to say this. A huge thank you to Armin and Eve, our two finance department people, for the enormous, and I mean enormous, work they put into this budget. It's days and days and days of work. It's very much appreciated. And that, I think, is it. Thank you all. Good night.
Good night.